Ready? We're going to call a regular meeting of the Plain Towns Report Trustees for June 25th, 2013, or will everybody stand and join us and say in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First order of business is the agenda, but before we get to that, I want to remind everybody that our board meetings now are not only audiotaped, they are videotaped and they are available online. If anybody wants to speak to the board at the end of the agenda, there is a Concerns of Citizens Public Speaks, we only ask that you sign the sign sheet in the back and when you come forward, please stand at the podium, speak clearly into the microphone. That's all that we ask. With that said, is there any additions or delegations to the agenda by fellow board members or staff?
I have an addition to new business. It is a resolution to renew the membership to the Stark County Township Association. And Mr. Geovasis, I think you had an addition also under new business.
Wow. I thought it was already on here, but I apologize. I think that I, what did I forget? Yes, I do. I would like to put under new business, should I put under Walsh University?
You can do that.
Okay, Walsh University.
We could make mine number two and Walsh University number one.
Okay. I thought you had that on already, so I apologize.
That's all right.
Any other additions or changes? The hearing done, then the agenda will stand. We will go to the first order of business, which is the Sheriff's Report. I'll turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. The first item I would actually like to turn over to Mr. Iscino.
Well, we received a request, a meeting on 21st Street, which is in Tryon Village, and we did put a speed buggy out there for two days, one in each direction, and I gave the detective a copy of that report. And if people look at it and doing things we need to do out there.
Okay, does anybody else have a comment or anything additional for Sheriff's? Staff? Does anybody in the audience have anything specifically for the Sheriff's representatives that are present tonight? We will close the Sheriff's Report with unfinished business.
Thank you. I would like to turn that over to Mr. Ettinger.
Mr. President, I have a resolution on here about the purchase of an outdoor municipal fountain with a water refilling station on the side from local industrial, not to exceed $4,000. Scroll down, I did take some pictures of the exact location where I think it would be best suited after park. The idea behind this is that after we leave at 3:30 and we lock the doors, nobody at this park has access to water, bottles, anything.
Okay. And the last time, you know, you brought this up last year, I circled back with Eric with your questions essentially is placement and location, and then you chatted with Joe on the soon, assuming, what labors?
Yes, we, Joe and Paul, they're going to provide the labor that we need to do everything in-house and deliver the concrete to us and want to pick up trucks.
Okay, you just get back to that.
Yeah, we can go right to the plan for the dip, and one of the one tons, it's easier to pour. You won't pay all the extra cost of getting a half yard going in or a three quarter yard.
Yeah, because of that thing.
Yeah, you pay a lot of extra.
Okay, adoption. A additional discussion.
Thanks for pulling the details together on that.
Joe, you guys, thanks for teamwork. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that ends unfinished business.
Okay, and we're going to go to new business, and the first item on new business is Walsh University, so we'll ask everybody to make a presentation to us about the future development plan for Market Avenue.
Yes, I'm Ryan Vance, the Director of Economic Alliances for Walsh University, and we have with today for your support, the university district. It's been a while since the ODOT has been redesigning the lighting of Route 43 Market Avenue, and it's been radical changes since that design has been suggested. And we think that Walsh University being a very thriving part of Plain Township, that it's an opportunity for us to work together and bring safety and quality of life improvement in the area and for the township. If you look at the plan we have in front of you, this summarizes some of the goals, looking at distinctive walkable community. The university district contains all of the elements needed to create a vibrant, innovative neighborhood, walk, live, learn, and play. The district can also achieve recognition as a progressive, exciting incubator for the future through placemaking and urban design. Creative placemaking animates play public and private spaces. It regenerates structure and streetscapes. It improves local business viability and public safety, and brings diverse people together to celebrate, inspire, and be inspired. We believe it's an opportunity in terms of quality of life in this area and throughout the township. It's an economic drive. You look what's going on there, you improve the scenic area, you improve sidewalks, you have sidewalks all around the district, it improves that. What we're doing tonight is really seeking your support of this. If you go through the rest of the program, on the second page, you see what the district would look like, whatever it entails. It covers a lot of areas between Walsh University to up to the high school. Page two, looking at a district that includes a very popular area right now, which is going on, very plausible, a lot of opportunities. And when you look at what's happening and where young people will be walking and riding bikes, you don't want them on the highways, you want them on safer areas. If you look at the next page, and you look at, which is part of your plan, you're put together, a lot of the comments that were there in your planning, corridor planning designs, so forth, are all there. Coordinated streetscape with a corridor design can visually and physically link different parts of a community together. An attractive streetscape can also build identity and be an integral part of creating a focal point or identity district for the township. When you look at streetscapes on the next page, again, I'm going to try to go faster here, so I don't take up all your time, but these are the things, the streetscape elements are listed. You're looking at intersection pavement changes, you're looking at reduced pavement intersections, you're looking at crosswalks, bikeways, center islands, street edge tree planting, the neighborhood connections as the bikeways, sidewalks, crosswalks. You're looking at branding the district, signal district identity, gateways, distinctive intersections, banners, furnishings, and lighting. The next page gives you an idea of what it looks like to have an open speed ramp, speed area going through an area, and what you can do by tapering down and refining, what happens in traffic, it slows down. If you look at the next page, going through this, you see what benefits street trees can do to an area, how it slows it down, what the benefit can be, what it creates. Next page shows you what the intersections and street markings would do to identify the area. Here's an example, the next page is an example of what streetscapes can do from where in Worcester College area. Made with median treatment, street light abaters, crosswalk treatment. The next page, this is a disaster, look at what happens on Route 43 going into Kent, no trees, no sidewalks on one side, span wire signs and signals, no median treatment. So we believe when you look at Route 43, we look at sidewalks on both sides, median treatment more than just plain concrete, we're looking at street trees and plain strips both sides, special pavement treatment at intersections, explore provisions of a bike lane or wider sidewalks, explore a method of supporting signalization and signs. This is our idea, this is what it will look like. If you look at the next page, it gives you a sample of what it will look like coming up from Snyder Road on the south of 43. What it would do, the improvement, what it would do to show what's happening. The next would show you what designs we would have at Walsh, what would change, what changes we made to our game area. And I think the best is a quote from the gentleman who said, "The best of these ecosystems will be cities and towns that combine a university, an educated populace, a dynamic business community, and the fastest broadband connections on earth. These will be the job factories of the future." And it meets the definition of keeping and retaining young people in this area. We ask for your support for this project, as we move along to work with ODOT and the community to bring it together, and to get the support for making this happen.
To open it up for discussion, just so you can explain to the other two board members, because I had a little bit more lengthy conversation with Jackie, right now you're only working for a, as a condition of support from the community at this point.
Correct.
And I think what the ultimate goal was in planning is to get ODOT to incorporate this into the costs into their plan.
Right. The idea is for them, we understand, talking to the engineers and designers, is that they, with talking to them and getting in with them at this point in time, they'll absorb the costs that we're talking about with the widening, streetscapes, and anything that's involved.
And that hinges on the greater factor of having total community support.
Right. Community support is the key. As long as we have the community behind us, and we're all working together with this, again, it's a community project, it's not a Walsh project, it's a community project. It's a betterment for the neighborhoods, it's a betterment for our families, the business, it's a very good economic developer, and it's also a way to retain. When you look at what the issues are for retaining young people, using the brains that are leading this community, we're always looking for what do you have better than? We've got parks, we've got tracks for them to run, now we've got a community that's vibrant, and putting this together makes the whole thing fit as a piece to retain young people that are here in this community.
Frankly, I know the value that all the brains over there reason out, quite frankly, and I live where I live because it's close and convenient, quite frankly, to the parks, to the grocery and all that, but as well the camps, the trails, and so forth. And I know even with what they're doing, quite frankly, right up in downtown Kent that's tied in with the university right now, it's huge. If you guys haven't had the opportunity to go up there and check it out, you really should, because what it's doing as far as drawing people in, I mean, it's pulling traffic, like there's, you know, tomorrow, it's not that it's any one thing specific that's the destination, but yet you combine all those factors, and there's something there for everybody, quite frankly. I mean, obviously with what's went on at Walsh since I left there, those six, the last seven years, how that campus has exploded, what's going on across the street with Washington Square, what we're looking at with neighborhood development, you know, there, the golf course, obviously, we're going to continue to have more folks coming through there, so I think those are all contributing factors to make that area all the more attractive, let alone for someone like me who's only, what, we're only five?
You're 100 yards away.
You're 100 yards away, less than five minutes. The concept and idea, I could easily get behind, I mean, longer term, obviously, things I'm thinking through in my head is what does ever, what would be sought at later points from this Board of Trustees on behalf of our community? Because obviously, I've got to believe that everybody's going to have some skin in the game on something like this, so for me, just to make a blanket statement, say, yep, we're behind it. You know, from a concept and so forth, and getting those phases moving forward, I can say yeah right now, but you know, as far as anything, financial resources and investment long-term, that's something we definitely have to dig through additional details, because I think it was seen just last week where we had joint meeting with the school board and our Board of Trustees, you know, talking about that, is a central corridor still over through there, sidewalks and so forth, and we know that's a commitment for the safety and the security of the kids, anything to sidewalks, but you know, I'm saying that for the sake of prioritizing, on our end, when we're prioritizing, you know, how's this going to come in, what resources are going to be required and so forth.
Just to clarify, the hope is to get ODOT to state to cover the costs of all the construction and the streetscaping and everything else?
That's correct. You know, we're not looking, universities are not looking to, you know, we're not looking to invest, we don't have the dollars to invest. Our advisors and consultants per se, and ODOT, in the right timing, the right place, for what we're asking to be done, they're have the dollars to take care of that project.
I see what they're asking for is the community support, to go in collaboratively with all the other entities, so we can show to ODOT that the whole community is behind us as a whole, to help leverage those dollars, to get them to design it into the plan.
Quite frankly, as one of the board representatives, I have zero concern from that aspect, especially being, I mean, you quote our own master, right? We just finalized last year, and that would, you know, create a huge step forward on that, definitely.
I am 100% open for support. We have that, I believe in anything we can do to beautify our community, 100%. I will state for the record, though, I have hesitated as far as not going to agree with trustee Hawes, as far as funds, we have to be careful if all of a sudden we have to start digging into our pockets. For some reason, it just rang bell with me, like shared with our superintendent, but we've got an allotment down, just down the street off of 55th and Lyfton, who, if we would have had matching funds, we would have solved their water problem, but because of not having matching funds, we have an allotment that's still underwater. So that's why I would want to be careful on our fund, because I wouldn't feel very right if we have to start digging in our pockets when we need the matching funds for Lyfton versus sidewalk. Not that sidewalks are that important, it is, but I've got to be careful. I am fiscal responder for, and we have a school board member that mentioned that at the meeting, that could that possibly take money out of school teachers hiring at schools? So I think we have the same concept. I'm very much open for it, though, for the support, absolutely, just as one of the trustees, just cautious of what this project could cost if we have to pay for it. I'd have a chance to share it with the school, when I'm here now, share it, and we have a school member that's here, he said.
Yeah, the whole idea at this point is the commitment with the understanding that if we can get this done collaboratively, the state will pay for the construction costs, and there would be no expenses out of anybody's budget for the project.
That's what we understand, that's what we're playing, that's our plan, that's our focus.
And if we can get that done, it'd be fabulous. I couldn't say enough about the project, because we know, because like you said, we did look at, you know, some options with Snyder Road, and the cost for doing what you're talking, just in that stretch of Snyder Road was, it was just for sidewalks, but with those lighting and everything else, Lisa, on one side, it was, what was the total cost of that project? It was up over $3.5 million, $4 million?
The total cost was 1.4. Sidewalks alone were about $800,000.
Which street lighting, you put about over, well, over $2 million?
If we can accomplish that at the state, participation, that would be, that would be a nominal, a nominal 100%.
So, can I ask you this? I mean, outside of verbal commitment, are you looking for some in writing from this board, just to reaffirm that, so you can submit it, or?
At some point, we'll ask you to give us that letter, at this point, we're not asking for that, we'll ask you for that, as we join the rest of the community together and put these signatures together as a community. Is that what we're looking at, as a community support? As you said, we're trying to get everyone together, so if we can come to ODOT with the signatures of our community, representing all avenues of this community, the school, the township, trustees, et cetera, it gives us more power to deal with them and say, we do have community support. And that's what we're asking, we'll come back to that. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We're open for questions later at some point, want some more details.
I mean, at this point, I think you have the board verbal when you're ready to.
Appreciate it.
And you're ready to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, new business number two is a renewal to the Stark County Township Association, and whereas the Stark County Township Association has realized that there's a financial burden that many of the townships face in 2013, this year is offering membership discounts for all current active and associate members. So be it resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the fiscal officer to renew the memberships of all current active and associate members, and to include new associate memberships for those department without renewing members, and to authorize payments of $200 from Fund 01A26E.
Also, vote. Second, vote. Discussion?
Discussion, yes, yeah, just a point of clarification. This year, because of the balance that the County Township Association has, we're going to use those existing funds to pay for all 17 of the townships, state dues, so the only that's being paid out here is essentially the county, the county, the 77, or the body as a whole felt that it wasn't prudent to sit on that much money, regardless of whether how it's good, you know, good financial times or bad financial times, we just want enough money left in those coffers to do the program, and we felt it was enough to go and kick it back, so.
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes. And that's the end of new business.
Thank you. And so we will go to the fiscal officer's report, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer number one is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the payment of a pending warrants in an amount of $175,508.73 attached to it, to be a part of the minutes.
Also, vote. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
Also move on fiscal officer number two. Second, discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize payment for the following medical claims provided by benefit services.
Also move authority pay. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number four is the investment report.
Okay.
Fiscal Officer number five is a request for a resolution based on a petition that has been made to the fiscal office for a new lighting district that might take the department's number three.
Also move. Second, discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number six is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, for a resolution to tender the contract to Frank Gate Service Company.
Also move. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes, and just for the record, so that reflects that this projection, doing this is going to provide a net savings of about $26,500 a year.
Fiscal Officer number seven is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
Submoved. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number eight is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize payment to the members of the Plain Township Board, zoning appeals and zoning commissions for the period of January 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2013.
Also move. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number nine is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize a refund as follows for overpayments for emergency medical services as requested by Ohio Billings.
Also move authority pay. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number 10 is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the fiscal officer to release the funds being retained as a performance bond for Snyder Street Park-St. Perry Sewer Project to wanger excavating incorporated into about $6,456.73.
Also move. Second, discussion?
Joe, we're good, everything from your perspective?
Yes, we did. They walked through last week, along with Stark Parks, and they were happy with all repairs on the trail and everything looked good.
Who's the second one?
I didn't tell him, it was roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Thank you. And that concludes finally the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. Scope to the road department, fire, there's nothing in there?
It's great.
It's straight, I'm sorry. Ask if you can read it over the top.
That's all right. Item number one, item number one is a resolution to adopt the amended Plain Township policy on harassment to replace the original policy in the Plain Township employee handbook.
Also move on Administrator number one. We'll second that discussion.
Those changes are highlighted in front of you for the board.
Okay, sir. Any further discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution to amend, adopt the amended changes to the cellular telephone policy and electronic devices section of the employee handbook, and to replace and attach within.
Also move on Administrator number two. Second, discussion, Lisa's wanted to review these.
Yes, he has.
Okay. All right, any further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that ends the Administrator report.
Thank you. Mrs. Campbell, and I will look at the road department, sorry, Iscino, apologize.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is a resolution to hire MB companies to perform a speed zone study on Oriya Road between Pittsburgh Avenue and Berkey not to exceed 2,500 hours.
I will move on this to bring it to the table, second discussion. Joe, haven't we done one out there before, you asked?
Yes, that was before the shoe foot, Texas was open. Scott stood a traffic count last year on Oriya to 8,200 a day.
And what was it back before shoe foot opened?
Four thousand.
So it's more than doubled.
Yeah, realistically, that road does not meet the standards for all that traffic.
Wow.
So I had met out there with Dave Treyns and Brian Cole, who's a traffic engineer, they are doing other work for signage out there because of site problems on some of the hills and the curves, and we're going to be changing all our signs once they get that taken care of for us. But the speed is 35, and we're looking to maybe get it reduced down to 25. You know, with the traffic light they put in Pittsburgh, people use it more, because now they know they can get out, because there's no traffic light there, a lot of people they can go that way, because a lot of traffic now coming off 77, using that as a cut through to get to Cleveland Avenue. We need to seriously take a good look at this road. If we can get the speed reduced, that might help the residents who are, you know, we're giving phone calls off and on from residents, they can't even get out of the driveway since not. They can't even get out of the driveway sometimes, so trying to help them out.
All right. No further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution to authorize purchase of gasoline, oil, and diesel not to exceed $20,000.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item number three is informational for the board that we did receive the grant from ODOT for the township signage upgrade and for $36,506.35. We're not able to buy those signs yet because they've got to be signed by the federal organization, but we should buy within the next month if we have a purchase of all the signs we would possibly need for a long time. There's a lot of stop signs, a lot of posts, and we should be in good shape.
What will be done with all the old signs and posters? Are those typically destroyed?
We could use a trade, they're aluminum, so we go to take them to the scrapyard and get a couple of them back for most of them. Some of them we'll save if they're still in good shape, but most of them will have to be removed.
Well, the whole reason why they're replaced is because of the letter size?
Some were letter sized, but reflectivity is the big thing. You know, we have to take a reflectivity study every year on our stop signs and we've probably replaced close to 100 every year. And the new ones will be the highest grade of reflectivity. So they'll use the last seven, eight years before we'll have to really look at those again. Item number four is a resolution to postpone, tamper, or no parking on the streets listed following for the Hall of Fame as requested by the Sheriff's Department. Signed, we post on August 2nd, and removed on August 5th.
So move on road number four.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item number five is the list of bids that we received for this year paving project and prices. We actually had a bid, our normal bid, and we had an alternate bid. The alternate bid was using 424B rubberized asphalt, which is a higher price as you can see, but we're only using half the amount. So we were able to add, just the list you have there in front of you, three more miles of road to get paid. It's going to be my recommendation to the board as we go through that we use the alternate bid instead of our normal way of paving, saving us a lot of money and it's saving us, we're actually able to do a lot more streets. We're falling behind because our money, you know, was shortened this past year and we can't keep this up. We've got to keep looking for ways to stretch the dollar.
Hopefully with the housing market and everything else in the next couple of years that will increase itself and come back some.
Longevity, have they noted any difference in those different asphalt spaces?
In the allotments, it's going to be equivalent. And that's basically where we're going most of, you know, low volume traffic, the roads that were really starting to get away from us in the allotments. And that's what we're concentrating on this year with this. Next year, we're going to ask some major roads like Snyder Road is going to do something no matter what we do. I didn't want to do anything with all the construction going on out there and all the truck traffic in this year and some other roads that are, Stark, Harrison Avenue.
Just to say, this reflects even the conversations you and I had when we sat down with the microservice folks because even most of the roadways were fit for it at this rate. This is how they was offering us.
They priced themselves out, they priced themselves out, Plain Township was what happened. Scott, I told them, we told them what we needed and what we were looking for and they weren't providing it. At this price, we can still compete with the microservices. As they come back to us and say, okay, we understand because they did much of a significant contract up here this year.
Hey, because I'm interested to see the difference in this versus the microservices.
So am I. I mean, it's something else, we're just trying to, you know, keep moving and keep trying and keep trying to save money and stretch our dollars and get more roads paved. Okay, so item number six is a resolution to work at 2013 Plain Township paving and road repair projects, application of 424B asphalt to North Star asphalt.
Also move.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And item number seven is a resolution to sign contract for the 424B asphalt to North Star asphalt.
Also move.
Second, discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Iscino. We'll go to the zoning department, we'll turn that over to Dennis.
Gentlemen, zoning number one before this evening is a list of nine properties to be voted for nuisance abatement.
Also move on zoning one, A, B, and C.
I will second those discussions. Danny, just one question. The property that repeatedly has been getting emails and phone calls about on diamond, it's my understanding that 50% of the property has it.
That property was perfectly voted, like it was by two days ago.
Because the back wasn't touched the other day when I brought it back?
Yeah, it was just up there one day. I think I figured it was good.
Might explain why I haven't got a phone call much today, so I was just going to follow.
Yeah, so I've been routinely grabbed by that one and people are like, see, they're front of the boat and then picks two days and back it.
They're all running back and forth. Longing for it.
That's right.
Bless you.
And we are just a little bit ahead of the curve on nuisance to where we were last year at this time.
No further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you. And zoning number two are payments for 41 nuisance abatement that our crews have been working on. I'd like to thank Mr. Renner here, his team, for doing a great job today so far. So we've got 21 of those.
Derek is one not to take credit for anything, but he and his team completed those 21. They're done in record breaking time and have heard nothing but great things from the neighboring properties who are very much appreciative, have some great job here.
Thank you very much. Derek, how are you doing? Are you okay? Was this about taking?
Well, we're looking at some replacement off the trees, some poppers, some dealers now, getting some prices and some numbers lined up. When we purchase anything, you know, we're purchasing in the right direction for what we, what we take as equivalent, how long.
And now, that's a, Mr. Leena, that's a good question you asked because Derek, myself and Mr. Iscino had a conversation about maintenance of the equipment and determined that it can be best maintained by our mechanics. So I've started along that path.
Very good. Someone have the motion?
Also move on nuisance payments 2A through U.
Second, then again, one more question, and is this property on width lift 1 and has the piece of machinery, backhoe?
No, no, that was totally different. That property went through with Mr. Williams and I, and we bet with the people with the cord bagger, pretty much, probably to the side. Those have been removed, junk cart has been removed, probably been cleaned up.
All right, I don't know if that was the same problem. No further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Danny. Let's go to Parks and Facilities, and we're going to turn that over to Derek, any of your, welcome him tonight as his first meeting sitting up here in the front. We'll turn it over to you, Derek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be hereby resolved by Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, effective June 25, 2013, to pay Caitlin bad and $10 per hour for instructing the Quick Start Tennis and Tennis 101 Parks programs not to exceed $480 from the park instructors fund number 14A07.
Also move on Parks 1A. Second, discussion? This goes on over outline.
Yes. Does that outline?
And approximately what is the township bringing in this, do you know, Lisa?
Well, it's, we receive a grant for the program, so it'll be dependent on the registrants. So we'll be able to give you a better idea of what we have.
The program's going to cover the cost of the salary?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And just so you know, these first A, B, and C, these employees are in work for us, they're just being hired as instructors, so they're already round term employees at the park.
No further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Mr. President, Parks Number 1B, be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, effective June 25, 2013, to pay Jack Moore, Ron, $10 per hour for instructing the Quick Start Tennis Parks program not to exceed $240 from the park instructors fund number 14A07.
Also move.
Second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Parks Number 1C, be hereby resolved by Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, effective June 25, 2013, to pay Melissa Hicks $10 per hour for instructing the running class of the Parks program not to exceed $240 from the park instructors fund 14A07.
Also move.
Second, any discussion? Done, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, then, item number two is a resolution to create a capital projects fund for the purposes of building the Schneider Park restroom. The source of the monies will be a portion of the general fund, not to exceed $210,000. The project isn't expected to cost that amount. I was just allotting that amount because that may include inspection, change orders. As the board knows, capital projects funds shall not exist to longer than 10 years. So I have a resolution, be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, that the Plain Township fiscal officer shall hereby be authorized to certify the establishment of the Parks Capital Fund to the Stark County Auditor and the Auditor of the State of Ohio, and also to authorize a transfer of $210,000 from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund as follows. It shall be the Capital Project Schneider Park restroom. The fund shall originate from 01BO2C improvement aside Schneider. The account that the fund shall be deposited into is 21A04D, and the transfer of funds shall be certified to the Stark County Auditor.
Also, also move on Parks 2.
Second, discussion?
Just from the discussion aspect, the Schneider restroom is what we've secured all the grant dollars.
Yes.
And just as a point of clarification, Frank, by who's in the public board, he watches our video, taking meetings, we have, we expend that money upfront and then we're reimbursing.
Then we are reimbursed. It is a reimbursement grant. Yes. Similar to how our playground grant worked also, it was a reimbursement grant. So we will have the funds for the restroom, and we also were promised funding from Stark Parks also. So we just have to create, since it's a capital project, create a capital fund which we will expend these funds from and then be reimbursed.
What was the total of the cost of project? What did it come back at?
Well, we are opening bids on Friday.
Okay. Now, since we're transferring this to the general fund into the Capital Parks Fund, whatever dollars are left over, can those be transferred back?
Yes, absolutely.
They have to.
Yeah, they have to be.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa. Let's go to.
Parks Number 3.
Mr. President, Parks Number 3, this is just an overview of some of the summer programs, early fall programs that we've got put together. All the instructors that are going to these programs and then with us. No, the community yard sale is going to be a new, a new program. We're going to give it a shot this fall and hopefully we get a good turnout. We can.
Whoever came up with that was a good idea.
Thank you. You like that, right? I was very excited about a community yard sale.
No, I like that it's going to be a fee for them to be there, which is a very limited fee.
Right.
It's something that goes into our parks.
Yes.
And it's people that are, it's kind of a.
And it's where the first full starts, right? So if it's clothing and also, you know, household items, and if it's a hit, you know, it's, it's just like that, it's.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
It's a great spot, and I like to deal with a lot of money will come in, we just got anybody.
Right, and it's a nice way for. Thank you. And we also have some tumbling, creative movement, a running class, but the yard sale, we're already getting applications for. I think it is something that the community is excited about. It's a lot of work putting together a garage sale for somebody, but a community yard sale where it's just a table and you're bringing those things that you can quickly put together that you've been sitting around, and I think that hopefully will be a hit. So thank you. I think that's the end of the Parks report. I will be doing the law director report tonight, and on the law director report is the Metalcow agreement. And Debbie Dawson and Mary Jo Shannon Slick and Eric Williams, our law director, have been working on amendment to the compensation agreement with the Canton City Board of Education, and Metalcow wants to assume the tax abatement formerly held by Thacker Aluminum. And in order for the board to agree to the transfer, Metalcow needs to enter into the enclosed amendment, which needs ratified by the trustees, which it has been, and then it will have to be, it'll have to be signed by the board of trustees. So there is a resolution, whereas an enterprise zone compensation agreement exists between the Canton City School Board of Education, the Plain Township Trustees, and Thacker Aluminum dated March 12, 2002, and amended on June 27, 2002. Whereas Thacker Aluminum was purchased by Metalcow, and Metalcow desires to enter into the, and assume the enterprise zone agreement between Metalcow, the Township, and the Stark County Commissioners, and whereas a condition to receive the benefit of the abatement, Metalcow understands and agrees, it must also assume the responsibilities Thacker has to the board under the enterprise zone agreement. Now be it hereby resolved, the enterprise zone compensation agreement between the board and Thacker shall be amended by replacing Thacker as the entity with Metalcow, and Metalcow agrees to assume and pay the board all financial commitments in the compensation agreement that existed between Thacker and the board, and such payments shall be in condition of any amendment to the enterprise zone agreement between the trustees, commissioners, and Metalcow.
Also move on law director one.
Second.
Discussion, just as a point of clarification, I just come from the tax incentive review council. Somehow, first time around, the paperwork got lost in the trouble, so this is why I had it come back before us again.
As a.
With the changes in the ownership of the company, but as well, some got lost down in the county, so he was asking to sign off on this so they can get this squared, squared away.
Lisa, is this an actual resolution for our boards?
Lisa, is this an actual resolution for our board, or is this going to be a real thing?
Well, it's almost a redo the second time around for us, so I don't know if we have to...
The commissioners are starting to sign off as far as what...
Yeah, well, the bar board essentially just needs to sign off on the agreement for the second time, which they will do.
For your, for your purposes, I mean, if you go back to be able to find which resolution, previous regulations, yeah, because it would have been 2012, well, with the 2012 Taxation Center Review Council, because I've been the point person, I think I'm the one who moved, I think the president, and then y'all were here, whatever, so this year when I sat down at the Taxation Center Review Council, they all kind of said, something got lost in transit, and they asked if we could get another copy of it signed, so.
I would vote on it as a resolution to be safe.
Just created it.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number two is in regards to the Hall of Fame annexation.
I have a question here. I'll make a motion, direct to the table, law director number two, Hall of Fame annexation for discussion.
Second discussion.
As far as this objection, we had previously discussed this one, one time before, is my recollection, but the parcel encapsulated a larger chunk of ground which had some residents, homes and so forth, because I know, I think, it was July, we crossed paths with the mayor out of the joint meeting with Jackson and North Canton, and even the mayor said, okay, I understand it's your process, we'll have new paperwork coming through for just strictly that road, the roadway there immediately, George, George Hollis Drive, I thought it was, and we was going to agree to that because the taxes that are collected out of it versus the cost of the local services, it made, it made sense to go let, go ahead and let them have it. Is this something that's different?
Well, we're going to continue to collect the taxes on that because it's expanded, we just lose the maintenance. Now, Joe, I can recall you, I'll be messaging someone about, they're not taking the whole road, roadway?
No, they, the annexation on the map looks like they start, I don't have the map here, 300 to 400 feet west or south of Full Road is what starts, so as it sits, the way it looks, that we'd be required of maintenance from Full Road to that, that point.
And that's why, Joe and our...
And that would also apply to all of us, I mean.
Yeah, please, Fire Road, I had concerns with that.
I'm sorry, from where?
About 300 feet south of Full Road is where the annexation starts, and then it hits south and west.
So that gateway entrance they left out?
Yes. Read through that map, there's only an angle of that.
That makes zero sense, that would cause a disaster.
I bet you that's an, that's an air.
For a shared department, it'd be, it'd be a mess.
That's an air on your part.
That was a concern of the objection.
I'm thinking about the property on the east side of that.
I thought the property, the property, the property was property.
I thought this was all a fault.
Well, how soon does it gotta have this back to the city of Canton or to the commissioner for the...
They'll take that thing all the way to Bolton, it's not, yeah, it's a piece of hard land.
So...
I think what we should need to do before we pass the resolution of checking to us, we need to call the camp to clarify what, why they're leaving that out of there, because it's part of the...
They'd also cut a piece of woodwork too, I mean, we're going to have a half a block of woodwork, and we're going to have half a block of our avenue, the way that, I don't know.
Okay, because the understanding was...
They bought those houses, and then they break one.
The understanding was going to be George Hollis Drive.
It's part of woodwork, part of our avenue.
Well, I think we'll need to send this back to the city of Canton and letting them know that we're willing to agree to what we originally agreed, and that was for all of George Hollis Drive and not for any of those side streets in Canton. In my meetings that I had with the city of Canton, it was very explicit, Eric was with me, that it would only include George Hollis Drive and not the side streets, it would not be breaking up so there's any confusion of who's going to take care of what?
Yeah, it's supposed to be the sole intent. Sole intent for the whole Hall of Fame festival for coordinating safety, safety services and so on.
The maps that we were providing show what we're...
Well, I think what we gotta do is take this, it need be time element, double ones, so we gotta get it really quick. But I think, I don't know, Lisa, do you want to call the mayor, or you want me to have call Sam?
You'll have better luck getting a hold of Sam than, than I will, if you want to call him.
Or I can call the mayor's office, practically talk to Warren Price, but we're willing to, at least I am, speaking for myself, I'm willing to live up to the agreement of George Hollis.
And we all remembered that, but when it came in and we reviewed the map...
They told us they were going to correct the map, send it back.
Joe and, and the chief and I all had concerns with the way it was mapped.
So let's hold off on it, we have the whole special meeting to object to this, we will. Like, till, before we pass this, to get clarification on this.
We'll table this, okay.
It could be all...
Yeah. Okay. Well, my law director work for the evening is done. I would like to pay the...
I want to see your log agree.
Moving on to communications, I have a couple thank yous. One is to fire station number three, it says enjoy a little, a little something to cool you down, thanks to all of you, you are always ready to help us, and it's signed the neighborhood, so.
I'm not sure I can tell you if there's something probably legal.
Believe it or not.
Don't ask, don't tell.
It was cooling. And then we also received a letter from Captain Carla Neville from the Canton Township Fire Department Water Rescue and Dive Team Coordinator to Chief Snyder, saying last week we completed our split water rescue technician training, included in this class were three individuals from your department. The class went extremely well, and I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that the three gentlemen, Rob Morton, Brandon Mackel, and Kyle Lesbong from your department were a real asset to the class. Their professionalism and eagerness to participate was refreshing and helped energize the class. Thank you for allowing them to attend this class, and we look forward to working with your department in the future for any water rescue situations that may arise. Hope you would pass that along. And that's the end of communications.
Okay, thank you. Now comes to the portion of our agenda for public speaks. If anybody wants to speak to the board, if you so at this time, I only ask that you give your name and address to the fiscal officer, and also sign the sign-in sheet on your way out, so we have an accurate spelling and address for whoever's going to talk. It's time, anybody want to address the board? Nobody? There is one item I would like to bring up under concerns with trustees, since we don't have a public speaks and trust for as much time, I don't think this is going to take as much time as I think. I'd like to clarify for the record, clearly, what transpired during what I call the issue related to our elevator being installed in the fire station in the time limits. I had Lisa Campbell emailing the minutes to that meeting when it was brought to our attention that the ADA requirements for that fire station had changed, that they no longer would provide for a variance to not have that elevator. It's also my understanding, based on the date on the time of those minutes, that we had already designed the building, put the building out for bid, and I believe the foundation was already being started. There seems to be some confusion, and first of all, Robert, it was a very good article, I thought it was very factually written, but there still seems to be confusion on a lot of public perception that we had secretly constructed this elevator shaft, hoping to get a variance for something to make it look like that we weren't planning to do this. And I want the record to reflect, I was shocked when those change orders came in front of us for the $100,000 to build that elevator. My position hasn't changed on it. I fully understand the reason for ADA requirements. We designed that building to give people access to the areas that they would need to be given, and purposely only put the sleeping quarters on that second floor because the public wouldn't have access to those. We appealed it after we found out, after the fact that that ADA regulation had changed. I want to be clear, when this building was designed, we were understanding we would be able to get the same exemption that the city of Canton had received. We found this out after the fact. I want the record to be clear, the architect on record said he was not aware of the change in the ADA requirement. The board of trustees has been very fiscally aware and responsible to what we've been doing over there. The fact of the matter, we are not experts in this area, but as an elected official, the buck stops at our feet. But we also should expect the architect that designed that building to bring those things to our attention before a change order and that dollar mark comes to our attention. And we had to screw around and change things to at least get the elevator shaft put in place so we can start constructing. We tried to appeal it then, after we were made aware that that exclusion was no longer available, with the hopes that if the elevator dying, you correctly, I don't know if I'm wrong, we put that elevator shaft in place hoping that because that was there, we would be able to get the appeal approved under the guise of the elevator would be installed at a later date if the change, if the use of that building would ever change, and we were denied. By no means of no imagination did the board plan for this, or was it brought to our attention while we were in the planning stages by our architect? Did we anticipate that additional cost? Well, we were told at that meeting that the original cost estimates came in at that building at 3.5 million, and even with this $100,000 additional expense, we were still becoming at, ended $300,000 below our original cost estimates. That's not the point. And the people that called and talked to me, I think they had, they have valid concerns. Even though that cost estimate came in below budget, doesn't mean that we should have had to spend that $100,000 if we didn't need to, and I think they have a valid concern there. And like I said yesterday, and the board could chime in and give their own opinion, this is why people hate government. And I don't want one resident in our community thinking that this was something that was done unattainably, on purpose, or for any other reason, that it was sprung on us at a moment when we could not stop construction, redesign the whole building, and make it one story. At that point, the project was going forward. And I think the integrity of this board speaks for itself, just by, based on the fact that we're the only community in this county that videotapes our many meetings and offers to anybody that wants to see what we do. We've got nothing to hide, I'm just as disappointed about this $100,000 expenditure as all of you, and I'm going to go on record again, not only is this what, why people hate government, regulations like this, that doesn't allow any common sense to be used in applications, just strict down the line, it's a public building, it's got to have these things, no matter what that use is going to be, is insane. It's the biggest waste of tax hours that I have ever witnessed in the 20 years I've been a licensed official. And I want the public to be very clear, if we were not being forced to build this elevator, that elevator would not be there, because if these guys are able to run down the steps when they get a 919 call, and we won't expect them to push that button, wait for the elevator to go down, they're going to respond in good as way, they're capable of walking up those same set of steps. And for us to be forced because of some bureaucratic regulation that's being, saying because of this use, it still doesn't make sense. Laws, there's tons of laws out there that don't make any sense or are unjust, but to force communities to spend tax dollars like this needless, and for the public now, I'm sure Scott, you've gotten phone calls, I've gotten phone calls, I don't know if Al has, to think this is something that we've done to try to make it look like we're making it easy for our firefighters for one reason or another, that's not the fact, that's not the truth. If the architect would have let us know about this earlier in the process, we may have done something different. And my next question, I wish the law director was here, and I'll reserve that question for the law director, because the other questions that have been handed down to me by residents in the township is, why are we the ones being financially held responsible for this state? And that is a valid question. The architect is the one that's the expert in those areas, not us. We go by their advice. And if that law changed, we should have been aware of that law change, so we could have made a decision on whether we wanted that elevator or not, or we wanted to design the building. We designed the building the way it was, because we were told we were, we would be able to get the same exemption that Canton got. And the amount of money we paid for that or to get that, I would like to know if we could get that money back.
It's fair, it's fair to say, I echo a lot of the same sentiments, because just even being out amongst the neighborhood occupants this past weekend, a block right up against Schneider Park where the fire station is, there truly are some, I mean, there's understanding, there's compassion, people with respect to the ADA component, but knowing full well that that part of the facility is not a public access, nor should, nor should it be, we're extremely upset, you know, as well, and trying to sit up here, you know, on behalf of all of us, because we're collectively a team, whether elected or appointed or hired for the positions, we know full well what the process has been that we went through. It's disappointing, because typically I refuse to read the comments under the paper because they're so far one way or the other, you know, just seeing, hey, there's comments about insensitivity and so forth, under no way did we usurp or try to circumvent it, it was due to lack of awareness to which none of us are building construction trades, experts on that, so.
Yeah, because I think we're all fully aware, you know, in line with the ADA requirements. Donnie, if that's not correct, which reason why we designed the building the way we did, where all the offices and every public access would be on the first floor and easily accessible, and all the other ADA requirements would be put in place? Because we are sensitive to those things, and it's not that we're trying to be insensitive. What we're trying to get across here is that we're being forced to spend $100,000 for something that is needless, is because the appeals board, even themselves, called, one called this, the elevator to nowhere, that there is no practical use for this elevator, but to vote against it, his own word, would be going against the tide. Going against what tide? The tide of common sense? Do these people think these tax dollars were on a tree? I don't know what tide he's speaking to, but to just approve something because to go against it would go against some type of tide.
Going against common sense.
It's going against common sense, not against the tide. So I want that to be clear.
In the appeal process, everything you spoke of was expressed, the concerns of expenditure, the extra expenditure, and they have to, you know, come back and, they understood that, but also understand the law reads and the decision is based on that.
They understand what the law reads, but also to make the comment, the comment that, I don't know if that was an interview to the reporter, a direct comment to the reporter, if that was in a hearing, but the quote was given, to vote against it would go against the tide. I don't understand what that means. I do not understand what that means when you're talking about using taxpayers' money, going against the tide. To force communities to spend money like this needlessly, if that's called going against the tide, I go back to my original comment, that bureaucracy is why people hate government, and it makes no sense at all. We need to give people access to our buildings, but they shouldn't be forcing us to spend money in that manner, in a needless fashion, just because they don't want to go against a tide. And I've never been more disappointed in the way this whole thing played out from the moment that we were told after the fact that that ADA, ADA requirement changed, and it wasn't brought to our attention while we were designing the building. And for the simple comment, we're going back for those minutes and reading his comments, well, we're still $300,000 under cost estimate, doesn't mean that $100,000 should have been spent either, so I just want to be clear. So I just wanna be clear, that was the architect's mistake, not Plain Township's. Everybody got anything else? All right, with that said, we will go to the approval of the minutes for June 2013.
Also move.
Second, discussion, hearing done, vocal.
Was that Mr. Lina on the second?
I did, yes.
Some time to talk here. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
And Lisa, when you talk to Eric, please, have an immediate start looking into whether the architect has an insurance policy for that mistake, or if there's any legal grounds for us to recoup those costs.
Got it.
There is a need for an executive session, be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, adjourned executive session at 7:12 PM from this regular meeting of June 25th, as authorized under Ohio Replant Code 121.22G for the purpose and consideration of 1A, appointment of a public employer official, 1B, employment of a public employer official, 1E, promotion of a public employer official or demotion, F, compensation of a public employer official, and 2, the real purchase of personal tangible and tangible property.
Second meeting. Vocal please.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.